Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at (931) 347-9150 or visit haneyrealtypm.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at m&amp;mastaffing.net or give us a call today at (931) 347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're more than just an electric utility. We also offer internet and phone services. Our commitment to our customers and our community is what sets us apart. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit pesenergy.com or call us today.
Terms to Insurance, Winterbury and Associates Insurance is the team you can trust. We offer coverage for your home, auto, business, and more. We work hard to find the best policy for you at the best price. Our personalized service means we take the time to understand your needs and make sure you understand your options. We want you to feel confident and secure with your insurance policy. Let us make insurance simple for you. Get a quote today at winterburyinsurance.com or call us at (931) 363-8638.
Department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50% to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at (931) 347-9150 or visit haneyrealtypm.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at m&amp;mastaffing.net or give us a call today at (931) 347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're more than just an electric utility. We also offer internet and phone services. Our commitment to our customers and our community is what sets us apart. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit pesenergy.com or call us today.
Terms to Insurance, Winterbury and Associates Insurance is the team you can trust. We offer coverage for your home, auto, business, and more. We work hard to find the best policy for you at the best price. Our personalized service means we take the time to understand your needs and make sure you understand your options. We want you to feel confident and secure with your insurance policy. Let us make insurance simple for you. Get a quote today at winterburyinsurance.com or call us at (931) 363-8638.
Department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50% to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at (931) 347-9150 or visit haneyrealtypm.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at m&amp;mastaffing.net or give us a call today at (931) 347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're more than just an electric utility. We also offer internet and phone services. Our-
18 commissioners present.
All rise. County court is now in session. I'll program Stowe.
Mr. Reese, will you leave this place, sir?
Lord, we thank you for today. Thank you for the blessing you give us. Thank you for our county. Lord, we ask you to be with our world. We ask you to be with the peace negotiations that's presently going on. We ask you to be with our president and also the leaders of the other two countries. Lord, just soften their hearts and help us, Lord, to stop the killing and the war in that end, the Ukraine area. Lord, we just ask you to be with all the people that are hurting and have lost loved ones. We ask you to continue healing of the rights and your family. And Lord, we just ask you to help us as commissioners. Lord, may we work toward building a community that is worthy of having with standards that are worth achieving. And may we, Lord, work toward doing what's best for our county as we disagree, as it's helped us not to be disagreeable. And may we work together in a way that we'll come out with a good outcome. We have many things in the future, Lord, to work toward with unknown revenues. Just continue to give us knowledge and wisdom to work with that. In Jesus' name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We mark evidence of persons in the house. May I take commission's presence?
Okay. The first order of business is agenda of concurrence. I'd like to point out that the EDC report for today, we're going to try to strike that from the agenda. Mr. Reese wasn't available to make the meeting, and he just briefed us a couple of weeks ago, so the next EDC report will be in September. So other than striking that from the agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Mr. Rubelski, second by Mr. Dore. Any corrections to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. And now I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Opkin, second by Mr. Savvy. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent as well. Yeah, I got it unanimously. Yeah, she's going to take care of it. So I'm going to introduce Representative Clay Doggett. He's here to give us our annual report. Clay, thanks for being here.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't have how many other items you had. There you go. You just take it up. But good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me with you today. And also, I want to say thank you for the work that you do for our county. I know it's extremely tough at times. We face different challenges. Every county and community is unique, and so is Giles. And so I just want to say thank you for the work that you do. I had hoped to have been here earlier this summer, but was unable to make that happen with scheduling conflicts and everything else that we had going on with the kids traveling and all that fun stuff that we do. But this year, the General Assembly, we adjourned in late April. We finished up this session, and so I'll talk to you about a few of the things that have happened this last year, one of which, there will be three constitutional amendments that will be on the November ballot that will be up in 2026 for the governor's race that will occur. There will be three amendments that we will have an opportunity as citizens to vote on. One of those is a prohibition against state property tax, not county. That is for the state to ever impose the property tax. The state imposed a property tax up until somewhere in the 1940s or early 1950s.
Forty-six.
Forty-six. And so we have not, that's not been on Tennessee code for quite some time. And so there's an amendment proposed that would eliminate that constitutionally, so the state of Tennessee would not ever levy a state property tax. There's a constitutional amendment that will expand the offenses in which a judge can deny bail. These are offenses that require 85% of their sentence to be served upon conviction. Currently, you can only deny bail for capital offenses, so this adds to that list. There's some, a lot of these offenses are things that we have seen across the state where individuals have been charged with an offense, they've been released on their own recognizance or very low bail, and go out and end up being repeat offenders. And so this is an opportunity for the people to vote on that. And also, there is one that I worked on a period. It's expanding victims' rights. In our current constitution, we have a Victims' Bill of Rights, but this goes a little bit further and gives victims standing. And so it's one that's kind of impartial to their, or carried about very much because it, we've worked on it for about five years. Public safety, this year, we allocated $175 million for public safety grants, $30 million for additional violent crime intervention grants based off of data that we saw across the state with crime rates. We were trying to make sure that we are getting more money out there for our public safety officers, sheriffs, or chiefs, those in law enforcement world, so that they can get the tools and resources that they need to help in crime prevention. $6 million for the TBI. Right now, if you, and we've tried to do a better job of this. We've allocated additional resources in the years past. Right now, but with processing of crime data that goes through the TBI lab, sometimes it can take months, even years, to get that information back. And so if you are in law enforcement, you've got that victim that's there, the district attorney's office has that victim, the victim witness court is working with those victims. By the time that it ends up getting to court, sometimes those victims have left the state just because it takes so long to get those kits back. And so we are hoping that we can fix that. That will create about 22 positions within that lab that'll help with that. And then another thing we did this year was the establishment of the UT, University of Tennessee Law Enforcement Innovations. And so they're going to be able to provide some really good training at little to no cost for our local law enforcement agencies across the state. You don't actually have to go to UT to do these things. They will come to us. Being that we have a UT campus here in Pulaski is a great asset to us. They're willing to come down and host regional events where we can have not only our sheriff's department or our city police departments come in, but they can also open it up to the area and bring in other departments to do some of this training. Violent crime rates are down overall in Tennessee's four largest cities, and I think a lot of that has to do with some of these crime intervention grants that we've done over the past few years. Violent crime fell 8% from January of '24 to '25. That's statewide, about 13% of property crime rates that we fell, that have failed. In 2022, the legislature passed a truth in sentencing reforms that require offenders that are convicted in eight categories of violent crimes to serve 100% of their sentence that's imposed upon them. In the year following that, the murder rate had decreased 14%, rapes had decreased 10%, and kidnappings have decreased 12%. And so we made a very, a very meaningful investment into public safety with our law enforcement officers over the last, last three years, and we're seeing some of that pay off, especially in some of our bigger cities. This year, we allocated $500 million new reoccurring dollars into public education. $148 million of that is for TESA growth, which is the funding formula that we utilize now. We used to use the BEP formula, and now we use the TESA formula that was created. There's $17 million for financial incentives for high-performing school districts, $27 million for summer learning camps and instruction, $77 million for K-12 infrastructure. That's something that's new. And so there's a grant pool there that the counties can pull from to do some of their bigger projects that they may have in their, for their school buildings repairs, air conditioners, windows, those types of things. It won't be there to build a new school, but it will be there for, for use in that. And also, $20 million for the school safety grant. We created that again this year. We also created what is called a Thriving Communities Grant, and it's focused around a couple of different things. It's a $42.5 million grant pool with non-reoccurring funds for emergency and community services. So there's $20 million that have been set aside for volunteer fire departments, $5 million set aside for rescue squads. Now, you might think we have, the rescue squad that's here in Giles County, in some areas, they're strictly just a volunteer fire, and then some you have the fire and rescue. And so we might have two opportunities there for some monies. $5 million for emergency medical services. So it might be new technology, new equipment, things like that, that our EMS providers may, could utilize. There'll be a grant pool there for that. $5 million for local museum improvements. And then we have a grant fund that I was very happy to help get created. It's the $2 million courthouse renovations grant. And so there were, us included, there are five, five counties that had requested funding for courthouse renovations. And so I went to the budget chair, and we put in $2 million for that. So the, currently, right now, ECD, Economic Development, will be the ones that are administering this grant. And so once they are through with the grant that they're currently having in place, I think it's some kind of deal with sidewalks and beautification and things like that, that closes late August, early September, they're going to open up this grant. And so we've already got the ball rolling. We've got them, they're going to be in contact with Mr. Stowe to get on that. If for some reason the grant funds are not, not depleted by the time the grant closes, or in the event that, because some of these counties were asking for small amounts of things that they needed, maybe some doors, a few windows, an air conditioner, things like that, whatever's left over will go back to those who had originally asked for the money. So we'll have, we might have two cracks at that as well to get some additional bonus. I know that several of you have been in contact with me over the last several months, and Executive Stowe and I have been in collaboration over this for really two years, and it's about getting some additional funding back to the counties. There's talk about, you know, we have a surplus in the rainy day fund. Our rainy day fund is kind of like our, it's our savings account for the state. Currently, we have more money in that rainy day count than we've ever had before. In the event that there is no revenue that comes into the state of Tennessee, our rainy day count will operate, as it is today, will keep us in operation for 51 days. That's where the state of Tennessee will operate for 51 days with no revenue that's coming in. As far as surpluses go, the way that we do our budget projections each year, because we, one, we don't have a state property tax, so with that, you kind of have an idea of where your money's going to be, and so we run through trends and some budget projections. Our revenue and F and A, Finance and Administration, they come together and they look. And so when we make our projections, we always try to go a little bit, you know, more conservatively approach to see, you know, what is going to be, that's going to come in. And then sometimes we do exceed in some areas of those allocations, such as sales tax, but in some of the other areas that we collect tax from that go into our general budget, they may be in a deficit. Right now, we're in a deficit in the fuel tax area, and we're about, through the end of July, we're at about a 0.4% increase or over budgeted for those months. So we do have some money that's coming in there for the surplus. But the way the surplus ends up working is we end up having the backfill here and there. A lot of times, those surplus funds are not always utilized as, they're not utilized as recurring expenses, but they do get used as non-recurring expenditures a lot of times. The question was asked about the tax that was taken from the counties, the sales tax that was taken from the counties. I've tried to do a lot of research over the last several months. I met with numerous individuals. Fortunately, we still have a lot of folks that are walking the halls, either in the legislature or in the state government, that were there back in two, in the early 2000s when they proposed a state income tax. What had happened back then is that the state was spending a lot of money, they were spending more money than what they should have, and so they reached out and they, they took something that's referred to as a single article cap. So that 2.75%, two and three quarters percent of that sales tax that you get, that we as a county voted to collect last year, I believe it was, we had been at two and a half percent. But from any purchase up to $1,600, the county gets that 2.75%. Any purchase that goes between $1,600 and $3,200, the state of Tennessee collects that. And so I would like to see that returned back. That's about $81,000 of revenue that would come back to the counties, to Giles County, just based off the numbers of 2024. That's about 81, did I say 81,000?
I said 81,000.
Yes, 81,000 is correct. Yes, for some reason, a million popped in my head. 81,000 is correct. That is the number just based off of that two and three quarters percent. It's capped at $3,200. That's where the cap has been, it's been that way for a, for a very long time. Then sometime during the Phil Bradsley administration, they took away, I forgot what the name of that tax is. It's not the single article. It's not state shared sales tax. Oh, yeah. Real estate transfer tax. Been talking about this for several days. The real estate transfer tax. There is a plan right now. There was a bill this last year that was ran. It wasn't funded in the budget. We've got some good wind, a lot of good support behind it right now. We're going to the governor to meet with him in the next few weeks to see about getting that, something that we can get, get pushed through, pick up some wind. We've got a lot of great support, not only in the House, but also in the Senate. A lot of things that we have to do, we've got two chambers that we have to go through. A lot of times, an initiative that gets passed in the House, or we put it in our budget for funding, the Senate does not pick it up in their funding bill. And so for it to come law, both bills have to match. And sometimes there's been some very heated discussions about appropriations that are going here and there and back to locals and the cities and other things, because the Senate may have wanted to fund something and the House didn't, or vice versa. The House wanted to fund it and the Senate didn't. And so last year, it was basically that, that deal was not going to make it through because we had some issues with individuals in both chambers in their negotiations and discussions. But with that, I've got, I've got some numbers that would, and what this proposal is, it's a 50%, you're going to get 50% of the real estate transfer tax that happens. And based off of a four-year average, Giles County has had somewhere around $727,000 in real estate transfer tax. And so if you take it, that's on the average, that's a four-year average is what I have right here. So that would equate to about $363,625 is what that would be, that would be permitted back to the county. Now, there is a caveat with this bill and this real estate transfer tax. 50% of that would have to be utilized for roadwork. So it would be paving or repair on roads or building new roads, 50% of that. Then the other 50% has to be used on infrastructure. And so you can't use it to pay salaries or benefits, you can't use it to expand departments, but you can use it for actual projects. And so we've got not only great support within the legislature in both chambers, but we also have the Home Builders Association that are really pushing for this. Our Association of Realtors are pushing for it. Our county officials associations are instrumental in being behind this. And so this is something, I've had numerous meetings over the last two weeks about this bill, specifically about trying to get this pushed to get it through. I was asked about sales tax that had been taken from the counties and returned. I was asked about sales tax that had been taken from the counties and returned, or at some point, and trying to get that back. And I know sometimes I'm talking about something that's called a state shared sales tax. Within the allocations of the state portion of sales tax that is collected, there's a portion of that that goes that the cities get a share of with the, from the state. The counties have never received that. And so, it is a hefty amount, but it is a very small percentage of our budget. I was looking earlier today at what we had taken in as a county in our sales tax over the last year, it was fiscal year twenty-five, so I guess that would have ended, end of June, but we had about two point nine million dollars that we collected in sales tax. When that is collected, it's sent to the state, it's sent back to the counties. There's an administrative fee, there was a bill this year that removed a good portion of that administrative fee, so you can get more of that money back instead of having to pay it in fees. Now, we also collect the sales tax for the cities within our county now, because we're at two point seven five, so they send that directly to us, revenue does, and so then, we can administer that to the cities, and there's a fee that we can, we can charge as a county on top of that to the cities for administration. But, like I said, we collected about two point nine million dollars in sales tax from the state, and the state portion of that was about six million dollars in collections. I've tried for three years to find a creative solution that we can, five ways to get money back to the counties. I want to do something on a reoccurring basis. I want to do something that's going to be concrete, that you can budget. But one of the issues that we keep running into is that anything that we do would most definitely have to be for one-time expenditures, there would be one-time allocations to do it, and there would be stipulations that are attached. Talking with several of my colleagues, especially in counties around us, some areas, they, they want to support something like this, they really don't know how to go about it. One of the things that we've looked at, that I've looked at considering and trying to navigate how that we come about this, is going back into a deeper dive, and I can do that, I can get way down in the weeds on numbers with our budget. Our tax system looks like it's really something simple, but it's pretty complex once you start getting down in there. It's a seven percent state sales tax, and one and a half percent of that is taken right off the top, goes to education, general fund, and then, there's some other funding mechanisms that go in there for appropriations that go out. Another thing that I would like to do, I'm trying to find a way to get this done, is I would like to have some type of, you call it a policy summit if that's what you want to call it, but I'd like to invite not only county commissioners from here, but some of our surrounding counties to come, and maybe I can secure the ag part for Saturday, and have our Director of Finance and Administration, Commissioner of Revenue, have these folks come down from Nashville, have you all in the room, have our county association representatives that are there, have all these folks there, have folks from other counties, so we can, we can get some questions answered, we can bounce some ideas to see what we can do. Because a lot of these issues that we're facing in rural counties, or bigger, or bigger counties are not, they're not facing those same issues. And anytime that we run legislation, what I ran into, when, when I'm looking at drafting these bills that are going to promote and push more money back to the counties, a lot of it is going to get sucked up by the four big counties right off the top. And they already have multiple ways of generating revenue. They have tourism taxes, hospitality taxes, and property tax, they've got a lot of things that they get that come in, and then, anytime we do something like this, it's just going to add more to them, and I would rather see that money stay with us and go to the rural communities, because that's where it's needed most. And so, if that's something that you all would be entertaining to consider, maybe if we were to do something like that, I would hope that we would have great participation from everyone. And also, I'll tell you this, whenever we have legislation, such as that real estate transfer tax, you've got great representation. Charlie Curtis represents the county commission, folks up there in Nashville. Charlie's a great man, a good friend, but he needs some help sometimes. It always helps if some of you can come up on those days with these legislations being considered and testify, and talk about what a need you have in your community. I know there's a lot of things that we've done with the state, I know that counties are mandated things that necessarily the cities are not mandated. We have to pay for schools, we have to pay for the jail, we have to provide the courthouse and courthouse security. We've got to do roads, there's a lot of things that we have to do, and the state puts some money in there. There's state allocations that go for education. Our, our education dollars has grown in Giles County since twenty eighteen substantially. There's been a lot of money that's coming from the state. A lot of that is due to a recent formula that was implemented a few years ago. But we've got the SRO fund that we have, that we put out every year, that's about six hundred thousand dollars that the state is sending to the counties. I'm hoping that that's something that does not ever go away, because if it did, if the state was to stop funding that, then that would put the burden back on the counties to make a decision. You would have to make a decision whether or not you're going to continue to provide that safety and security in our school system, or if you're just going to let it go, because there's going to be a cost associated with it. But I'm hoping that we'll continue to do those things, and there's not been any conversation about any of that. But anytime that we start talking about revenue, about taking away from appropriations that, from allocations that are listed within the Tennessee code, as far as the state sales tax goes, there's always things about, well, there may be opportunities, unfortunately, things that may end up having to get cut, and I don't want to see any of that happen. And so, I think we can all work together, we can, we can put our heads together and come up with some ideas and some plans that we can use to move forward, because we certainly need it. And so, I'm willing to help you, I just, I need you to help me, and give me ideas and things that we can do, and we can move forward from there. Any questions?
Got one.
Yes, sir. You were talking about that real estate tax. I think I understood you guys, you said you couldn't be used for roads, but you didn't say anything about bridges, could it be used on bridges too?
Yes, infrastructure. So, fifty percent of it has to, fifty, so if you were to, of that, of that money that I said we would, we would stand to get there, just based off of that, it's about three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Half of that has to be utilized strictly on, on road projects dedicated. That would include a bridge over a road, restructure, resurfacing, whatever. The remainder of that can be used for other infrastructure projects, so... I'll find out. But I would think so. And that's, and I'm glad you brought that up. Mr. Adams said that we need more water, and folks, we're, we're heading towards a water crisis eventually, if we're not already there. Murray County is just about tapped out. They've, they've taken all they can from the Duck River. There's initiative, there was, there was initiative in the budget that did not get funded. We actually diverted that money away from that project, but it was going to send a pipeline from the Cumberland River down into Murray County. The Army Corps of Engineers said that Cumberland, you can't take any more water out of Cumberland River. Plus, that pipeline expansion was going, I forget how many parcels of land, how many right-of-ways they were going to have to go through to get, to get that pipeline down to Murray County. It was in the thousands that they were going to have to cross through, so it was going to be a pretty daunting task to do that. But there is an initiative right now, and there's even some federal support from the federal delegation in Washington to consider putting that dam back, rebuilding that dam up there in Murray County, which would create a lake that runs all the way into Marshall County. That would be a source of water, that's probably, that's a hundred-year solution, if they were able to do that.
I've heard that they should build that dam.
Sir?
I heard there's going to be a dam.
There's a great push in Murray County right now. And the, and the committee that's made up of volunteers that are pushing that are from Giles County, Marshall County, Lawrence County, and everyone that's around that Murray County area, folks are pushing for that, because there is a need. I know, I'm on the South Giles Utility District. Athens, Alabama, just across the line from us, they draw all their water out of the Elk River, just below the state line. They're saying that we can't tap into the Elk River to get any water out of that, because Limestone County's taken it. And that's one of the fastest-growing communities in the south, certainly in Alabama, is in the Athens area. They're growing leaps and bounds, and so, we've got to come up with some, some alternative solutions. And so, I'm hoping that they'll make some real considerations in Washington about that dam up there in Murray County. Yes, sir.
The, the two million dollar courthouse renovation grant, I think you said five counties requested it, is that two million each, or split the two million?
That's, that's two million dollars that's going to be, that'll be available for, that's, that's a total.
Okay.
And we want it all.
I know, I know.
Want to go on the road?
And I told them I'd love to have it all. Absolutely. That was your idea, by the way.
Well, we're going to have to come up with some more ideas.
Yes, sir.
When are those, well, when are those grants going to be available? I know the one you said, all, or in September, and what about the school grants that we're talking about, when are those going to be available, or are they already?
They're open now.
Okay, sorry, just trying to figure out the timing. Thank you.
Yeah, the only reason that that one, ECD is administering that grant, they've got some kind of unification grant that they're working through, and when it closes, they're going to pick this one up right away and open it, so it should be open first week of September. But they're going to reach out to Executive Stowe as soon as the day it opens. We're going to be ready, I think we're going to have everything together for that, so... And if we're the only one that asks, you know, we need to ask for exactly, we can ask for the entire two million dollars right out the gate. Yes, sir.
Clay, could you give us a little insight on the state right-of-ways cutoff, where you can cut? I don't know if it's something changed or not, but a lot of people have asked me about why we hadn't had the state right-of-ways cut off, the state roads, like we haven't
You talking about the mowing?
Yes, sir. Has something changed on that?
They did, there was a change, and every so often, they, they make, T-Dot makes some changes to how they, they do that. So, sometimes in years past, they've done three cuttings on some of the roadways, I think this time, they're only doing two in some areas and one in others, and then, they'll go back to, it'll, it all ends up cycling around, that's why it was explained to me, they, they come back. There for a long time on the interstate, just north of Lindell, the exit twenty-seven, there's a big open spot right there between both sides of the interstate, and it had grown, they used to keep it just as slick as a yard right there, and then, it got to be overhead high for about two or three years, and they were letting some kind of natural something happen. Yeah, well, just stuff that makes everybody sneeze, and then, they hang back in there and they mow it down. But I've noticed on the bypass, they've made one, one swipe, and then, they left some stuff in the middle. But from my understanding, that's what it is, they're cycling things through, they're only going to cut it here and there, and just let them cut through in certain areas.
Like on Highway eleven where I live, it's, it's really weird, this is Buck Ridge, you know how tall it is?
Yes, sir.
People can't see out of the driveway, you pull it out from the stove, they come and ask.
Well, some of that is on the schedule, and they're going to get a fall cutting. Now, another thing that has kind of messed with their mowing, and that is the poisonous hemlock that's growing. We started having these conversations last fall with T-Dot, and we did some meetings back in the spring. They have a spraying program that they're going to do, but they, they need to spray later in the fall to be able to do that, and once they mow, they don't go back, and they didn't want to go back and spray after they had already mowed that area when it was set, they mowed this summer. So, they're going to mow those areas later in the year, and then, they're going to go through and spray, so there's going to be, you may have poisonous hemlock on Highway eleven down through there, and that's why they're, they're delaying that mowing is because of that.
There is some there.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned thriving community grants, talking about volunteer rescue squad grants. Are those open now, or did you say, I can't remember?
I believe they are, yes, ma'am. And we have been the recipient of some of these grants in years past. But I don't, I don't know if, if we've applied for anything.
We've applied here?
Yeah. I, I don't know if we've applied yet, is what I'm, what I'm saying.
Anything further?
City grants, a lot of, or like four night shelters to be built in your area.
That's a good question. There have been some federal grants in years past that did that, and so, we had, the state actually administered those grants from the federal government. I don't, I have not seen any as of late. Now, we can always do appropriations requests for communities, towns or whatever to get four night shelters, but that's, that's one of those things. Those grant opportunities, it just depends sometimes a lot of that because the feds put that in, as to where that comes from. And there's been cuts also, there's been a lot of cuts federally, a lot of programs that we offer, maybe through our Head Starts and some other things like that, some of the meal, meals on wheels and things that the Development District or the South Central Human Resources Agency utilize, they're, they're experiencing some, some budget cuts from the feds, and so, I can anticipate that a lot of that stuff, the state is going to try to pick up to move forward, because a lot of people rely on those services that are needed, and so, we're, I'm thinking we're going to end up doing that amongst other things that we receive funding from. About thirty, about thirty, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-eight billion dollars, somewhere in there is what we get from the federal government. Our general allocation that we have each year is around twenty-eight billion dollars. That's Tennessee tax money is what we have, it's about twenty-eight billion dollars, and the rest of it comes from the feds. And so, that ARB money that we've been receiving for the last few years, that's gone, and so, there'll be a little bit of a hit to our overall budget that we had, we had fifty-eight billion dollars this last year, so it'll take a hit from that, and then, kind of uncertainty as far as what the rest of those dollars look like. The Big Beautiful Bill did have a provision in there for, I think it was fifty billion dollars to be sent out to rural health, and so, we're hoping that we qualify for some of that. Twenty-five million of that will be dispersed, or twenty-five billion of that will be dispersed in the states, and the other twenty-five billion will be for a, a grant system that that'll be, that'll be scored, so it'll be based off of your application is what you can do, and so, we can certainly benefit from some of those things too, as far as our rural hospital gaps.
Clay, thanks so much for being here. Appreciate your update.
Thank you all very much, and I'll, when I can get together, maybe get some dates or whatever, put it out about the end of that, and we'll get together or something. Thank you all.
Appreciate you, good job. Thank you, Clay. Okay, next on the agenda is a period for public comment, are there any public comments on the agenda items? Okay, and moving on to the first election commission elections. There is one? Come on to the podium, please, and, sorry, I didn't see you. You've got five minutes.
I'm speaking on, my name is Tammy Faust, and I'm speaking on behalf of a dear friend of mine. She's got an infant's complaint, and she has been, she's been threatened, harassed, her family has, she can't go out. She can't go out. She came to Graham. Graham has not done anything.
Okay.
And, well, let me finish now.
Let me stop right there. First off, we're supposed to be talking on things that are on the agenda.
What this is, I'm gonna finish.
This is not on the agenda.
I'm gonna finish.
And this is being investigated. Uh, you gotta get your facts straight if you're gonna make a comment about something that's not on the agenda.
I am, I'm finishing something else.
Keep going.
But, oh, to save money in the budget from next year, since her job's open, put that money again in the budget for next year. And then, do you drive a county truck, Graham?
Excuse me?
Do you drive a county truck?
No.
So, watch the secretary drive a county truck. So, that $60,000 county new truck is being driven by a, a secretary, which shouldn't happen. We're letting too many things slide. We need to take accountability now as citizens and taxpayers for all these departments. And we wouldn't be paying all these property taxes. We need to open our eyes and make these people accountable. Because there's a lot going on that needs to be cut out. That's all I got to say because there's, you shouldn't, only the people that should be driving vehicles home and on time is your people that's on call. And all this bickering and back and forths through the commissioners need to stop. We all just need to get along and everything, and this hostility against the EMS workers need to stop. I just, I just got that. And I, I think we need to come, we just need, as county, county people need to open their eyes and start watching. Because these people here are gonna be in this, in here next year to vote. It's gonna be in here to vote next year on the budget. Because the county executive and commissioner are not voted on to August. So we got to keep our eyes open.
Okay, thank you. So for clarification for the public, when an ethics complaint comes in to me or any ethics committee member, it's referred to the county attorney. And this complaint that we received has been referred to the county attorney. And in this case, uh, the county attorney has referenced it out to an investigation. So when I have some findings from that, that will be shared with the ethics committee. Okay, movement, are there any other public comments on issues that are on the agenda? That's what public comment is for.
If the candidates.
I'm not there yet.
Okay. Will they have an opportunity?
Okay. So, the commissioner election, that's up to you to answer your question. The process for filling a commissioned vacancy is provided in Tennessee Code 5-5-111. We're gonna be following that process to the letter. As background, we circulated public notice of this election for 14 days, and that's twice that required by law. Eligible candidates or any registered voters who live in the third district will be dealing with the first district vacancy next month, as much as the third district. Uh, the following individuals have submitted requests for consideration. Ricky Carpenter, Mike Sessorelli, Rosemary Martin, and Brett McNeil. Please note that applicants must be formally nominated by a city commissioner to be an official candidate. Uh, next, no nominations from the public are permitted. Nominations must be made by city commissioners. Uh, nominations do not require a second. Uh, nominations will close with a motion and a second majority vote. I think where Mr. Bedore was going was canned candidates, nominees, uh, have some podium time. That's completely up to you. That's not required by statute. We do not need to have podium time, but if that's your desire, then you will make a motion to that effect. Okay, four votes for nominations. I think Mrs. Guthrie is ready to rock.
Yeah, at the request of the Reisner family, I'd like to nominate Ricky Carpenter.
Okay, we have a nomination for Mr. Ricky Carpenter. Matt?
I'd recommend Brett McNeil.
Okay, we have a nomination for Brett McNeil. Mr. Bedore?
I'd like to nominate Rosemary Martin.
And a nomination for Rosemary Martin. And Mr. Reedy?
Mike Sessorelli.
And a nomination for Mike Sessorelli. Are there any others? I'll entertain a motion for nominations to cease. Okay, so moved by Mr. Savage, seconded by Mr. Hopkins. Okay, so the way that this works is we do a roll call vote. The first candidate who gets 11 votes is the commissioner. Uh, so in round one, if there's more than one round, in the first round, the person who gets the least amount of votes will get dropped off in the second round, and so on. Is that clear, how we're gonna move? Great. And we'll. Okay.
Ms. Curry?
Carpenter.
Dr. Liger?
Carpenter.
Mr. Jones?
Carpenter.
Mr. Wamboldt?
Carpenter.
Mr. Wilber?
Carpenter.
Mr. Adams?
Carpenter.
Ms. Guthrie?
Carpenter.
Mr. Hopkins?
McNeil.
Mr. Reedy?
Sessorelli.
Mr. Sudden?
Carpenter.
Mr. Butler?
Carpenter.
Mr. Jones?
Carpenter.
Mr. Best?
McNeil.
Mr. Bedore?
Martin. Martin, Rosemary Martin.
Ms. Bryant?
Martin.
Say that again?
Martin.
Thank you.
Mr. Sudden?
Carpenter.
Ms. Guthrie?
Sessorelli.
Ms. Pruitt?
Sessorelli.
And Mr. Bryant?
Carpenter.
Okay. So, Mr. Carpenter got 12 votes, so in the first round, he's elected as commissioner. Congratulations, Mr. Carpenter. If you all will keep your seats, we're gonna do a short recess while, uh, Harold, so where is it in?
All right, Ms. Lynn? Right here. I solemnly swear that I will perform with fidelity the duties of office, which I have elected, which I'm about to assume today. I do solemnly swear to support the Constitution, the safety of the city, and the integrity of the state. To the faithful who perform the duties of the office, the county commissioner, representing the third district, which is Kansas County, Tennessee. There's you, that's about the, you know, statement of disclosure of interest, and there's the minutes of last meeting. Yeah, all right, congratulations.
Okay, we need to just call another roll call? Just one moment, please. Sorry? One moment, please. I guess keep your seat, didn't really mean it. No. Just while we're waiting, I'd just like to point out that, uh, Ms. McNeil, Mr. Sessorelli, Ms. Martin, thanks for stepping up and volunteering to, uh, serve. It, um, I'm glad we got a commissioner in that seat now, but it's good to have four qualified candidates. And I would encourage you to go out there in August, all right? Thanks for being willing to serve.
Appreciate it. Nominate interference, thank you.
Okay, just call a roll call?
Ms. Curry? Here. Dr. Liger?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Wamboldt?
Here.
Ms. Wilber?
Here.
Mr. Adams?
Here.
Ms. Guthrie?
Here.
Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
Mr. Hopkins?
Here.
Mr. Reedy?
Here.
Mr. Sudden?
Here.
Mr. Butler?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Robelski?
Here.
Mr. Bedore?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Sudden?
Here.
Ms. Guthrie?
Here.
Ms. Pruitt?
Here.
And Mr. Bryant?
Mr. Bryant?
Here.
Twenty commissioners present. Next order of business is isolation of non-responsible workers. We have the following regulation. They are Kimberly, Longhues, Antonia, Mullins, Chesley, New Appleton, and San Roches.
I'd like to have Mr. Wilber and Mr. Bedore second. Thank you. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, we'll prepare to vote.
Okay, twenty ayes.
Okay, motion carries.
Next order of business is reports. In today's report is Jaws County Finance Director's report for June of 2025, which includes the following. Jaws County General Fund, Drug, American Risky Plan, Probation Fund, Highway School, Federal Food Service Debt Service Capital Projects, Highway Capital Projects, Education Capital Projects, Education Capital Number Two, and Other Capital Projects.
Okay, Mr. Wilber, we have a motion to approve the review. Okay, and seconded by Mr. Brown. Uh, any comments or discussion? Stand by. Vote when you're able.
And the vote is twenty ayes.
Motion carries.
Next order of business is, uh, contracts agreements and grants. We have the government got, uh, grant contract for the Tennessee Department of Health. That term is 7-1, 25 to 630, 26. And the spectrum business, uh, contract with Jaws County Board of Education is double work.
I'll entertain a motion to combine these contracts, Ms. Schoolspeak.
Motion to combine.
Okay, and seconded by Mr. Brown. Any comments or discussion on the combining, combination of those two? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carrying. And now entertain a motion to approve, Mr. Wilber, and seconded by Ms. Schoolspeak. Any comments or discussion on these contracts? Okay, please vote when you're able.
And the vote is twenty ayes.
And the motion carries.
The next order of business is resolutions. We have the First Amendment, which is 2025-35, authorizing amendment of the 25-26 Budget County General Fund 101, of Probation Settlement Fund 128, General Capital Project Fund 171, Other Capital Projects on 1A.
Okay. Four is open for motions. Uh, Mr. Hopkins?
Motion to approve.
Okay, and seconded by Mr. Robelski. Comments or discussion? Seeing none, we'll prepare to vote.
Nineteen ayes and one negative.
Okay, motion carries.
The next resolution is 2025-36, authorizing amendment of the 25-26 Budget Highway Fund 131.
Okay, motion for Mr. Wilber, motion to approve. Seconded for Mr. Hopkins. Comments or discussion? Okay, please vote when you're able.
Twenty ayes.
Motion carries.
The next resolution is 2025-37, authorizing amendment of 25-26 Budget Board of Education Fund 141, 143, 177, and 178.
Okay, before you make a motion, I just want to make one pending correction. On 141, Fund 141, General Public School, the first line there should be 449, not 499, just for instruction textbooks. So we're gonna make a notion of that in our minutes, but I just, under Fund 141, it's line 71-100, and it should read dash 449. Okay, now the floor is open for a motion. Mr. Boons? And a second for Ms. Schoolspeak. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, we'll prepare to vote.
Vote is twenty ayes.
Motion carries. Okay, I don't have any unfinished, unfinished businesses. Is there any new business?
I don't know if this was a new business or announcements, but the only legislative, uh, committee item that is pending is that proposal to reduce the commissioners to a smaller number that we, I think, kicked to after the budget was decided. So now that the budget's been voted on, um, I'm happy to call legislative meeting at our next slot. I think that'll be the first Friday.
It's usually right after budget school.
Yeah, it would be after the budget school meeting, I think the first Friday of this next month, September. Just letting you know, I've let legislative members sort of weigh in whether they think that's necessary. I don't want to waste the county's tax dollars on calling a meeting if we know that we, you know, are just gonna not really move forward with that proposal or not. But, um, I don't, uh, it's an announcement that I'm happy to call a legislative meeting the first week of September for that item.
Okay, thanks.
If you want to do that.
Before we go to announcements, is, is there any new business?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there sponsor for that particular legislation?
At this moment, no. The resolution has been drafted, but there's not a sponsor that has taught themselves to do it.
You know, I'd have to go back in the minutes because I believe it was proposed by somebody, I can't remember who, and went through the committee.
Okay, so I would sponsor that. Okay, so we do have sponsors.
I think it goes back to when you were chair of the legislative. Okay. So it's still pending. It was asked to postpone it until the fall. And believe it or not, it was found there. One other announcement, so, you know, we've lost Joyce Wooder to retirement, thankfully. But, you know, just keep her in prayer. Jethro is still, she's got a long road to go with Jethro in rehab. But we'll be doing the 1st District election next month, just like we did this month. But please reach out to Joyce. I wanna make sure that we have her here one day to commemorate her 11 years of public service. But her vacancy has been publicized and I've already started to receive a couple of applicants. So I'll make sure as I get those, I'll forward them all to you. Are there any other announcements? Anyone wanna make the favorable motion? Yes. Okay, motion adjourned. Second, Mr. Carpenter, you have any work you want?
Thank you all.
Speech, speech, speech. Thanks for joining us. We're adjourned.